I'll take the role.
Okay.
Mrs. Oden is here, Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino is here, and Ms. Porter?
Here.
Okay.
And Ms. Ho Hensy is not here, and Ms. Raymond is not here.
And Ms. Van Twyver is with us by phone. Are you by yourself, Ms. Van Twyver?
I am.
Thank you. We still have a quorum.
Okay.
And Dr. Mosley is with us also.
Dr. Mosley, would you like to start this?
I'd be more than happy. I was just waiting for the roll call and everything, and then I can just jump right in if you like.
Took us a little time, but we got there.
Yep. So I'm gonna just give the public and the board kind of a brief overview. And I will just start that this meeting was scheduled in the summertime. This is a meeting that the -- when we started talking about strategic planning, we really thought it would be paramount to give the board an update just on the progress of the strategic plan process. So just to recap for the public and for everyone out -- and the board members, this document is our -- kind of our, what I'd say, our blueprint in terms of how we have planned out the strategic plan process, the activities that are associated with it. So I'm gonna talk big picture first, and then narrow it down, and then get into some of the things we've accomplished so far. I will say that at any time Sue Porter, the co-chair of the strategic planning process, can also jump in too, but certainly this is a collaboration. So to begin with, we started in the spring and slash summer of last year with the planning process of how we were going to develop it. Then we created certain what we call benchmarks in terms of the planning, data gathering, analysis, draft of goals and strategic objectives, review of the draft plans, and then the review of the final draft plans in the spring of 2019, followed by the late spring for a presentation to the board. So if you look at this, where we started with the planning process in the spring, this fall slash into the winter, we are in the phase of what we call focus groups and gathering data, and now we're slowly, slowly transitioning into the analysis part of this. And I would say we're probably gonna get into the analysis part after the break. So that's kind of the overview of the strategic planning process. This document is also located on the website, and certainly it's an opportunity for individuals, the public, board members, kids, students, anyone, to really see kind of what I call the big picture. So now what I'm gonna do is transition into the, what I call, a presentation, a brief presentation, to give the board and the public a sense of where we've come, what's going on, how we have accomplished our things, and kind of the overview. So if you recall, we invited -- we had the strategic planning kickoff meeting. We have two essential, what I call committees. We have the steering committee and the leadership committee. And both of these committees are not -- I just wanna start off by saying they're not designed for decision-making in any sorts. They are designed for us, and the best word that I can use is a sounding board. It's two words, excuse me, two words, is a sounding board. They give me, Sue Porter, feedback on ideas, concepts, and the progress thus far. And so we have so far met with our steering committee and our leadership committee twice. So there are two different committees. And so far, we've gotten some very, very helpful feedback on our process so far from these two committees. I just captured, and I say I captured, some of the feedback we got from the committee, but certainly I could spend probably another hour or two just talking about the intimate details of the feedback they gave us, things to think about. And sometimes I felt like when I met with the steering committee, I thought that I had it, okay, this is my plan. Things are going really well. But they asked so many critical questions, and they were very helpful, that I felt like I had more homework to do than actually accomplishments. And again, I really appreciate just that feedback, because they actually make us better at our process. They make us think critically. One of the things that was -- what was interesting is when we had developed the survey, and I say the survey, what we call the beta version of the survey, it was really helpful to have different people from that committee actually participate in the survey and give us some feedback. So when I use the word "beta version," we actually have developed the survey already that I'll talk a little bit about later. But certainly, you don't wanna just launch a survey without testing the survey first. It just would not be prudent. So what we did is we asked all of the people from the leadership and the steering committee to actually participate in the survey and give us some feedback. Feedback we got was, of course, you know, make sure the survey is available in multiple languages. In Nashua, there's 62 different languages that are available. I mean, excuse me, 62 languages that are spoken in the city. So they said, maybe it's best for you to make sure that the survey's available in Portuguese and Spanish. There was one suggestion that also said that you should also have the survey available in Swahili. I'm just putting it out to the public. If anybody can translate Swahili or help us do that, please email me directly. The other thing that was very, very helpful during these meetings is really when we talk about our end game, they certainly made some very helpful suggestions in terms of making sure that if they -- if there's any need for some flexibility, they certainly gave us an opportunity to say, hey, listen, once you get this draft of the goals, you might wanna schedule maybe one more meeting in the spring so that we could help you build consensus and hone in the goals of the strategic plan. So thus far, we've met two times with the steering committee and the leadership committee. They've given us feedback so far on our focus groups. They've given us feedback on our surveys. They've also helped us make sure that we just continue to hone in on attainable priorities and not get kind of focused in on the weeds or the minutia. So they've been very, very helpful. Sue, did I miss anything?
No, but I would just say that the survey is an online survey. So the people in those two -- and the steering committee and the leadership group actually took it on different devices to see if it would work. So some people took it on a phone, some took it on a laptop, some took it on a tablet, and it did work, so that was good. And they just gave us input onto how the questions were working, you know, 'cause there's a -- it's adaptive. It's an adaptive survey. So if you go in and say you're a teacher, it's gonna bring you to that set of questions. If you're a parent, it'll bring you -- so we've been working on that. So they had some good suggestions that way.
If I can just -- I actually jump to the survey slide, just to kind of echo Sue's sentiment. Is this? Okay.
So the people developing the survey, can they put Google Translate on the page? Google Translate will dynamically translate whatever the webpage is. So I don't know how they're implementing it, but that's probably 140 languages, and that's widely known out there. It's a widget, you just put it on there, you integrate it into a page, you tell it to translate the page you're on, or even a document, and it will do that for you. So you have the ability to do many of the language things you want without an investment on the part of the district.
I'm not sure if we have that capability, because the survey is very, very customized, to the point where you have to answer a series of questions. The survey is on a platform that is designed and supported by UNH. It's the very same survey that was -- the same platform that was developed through our climate survey. So I have -- we have to look at that. I think what's important, and just to kind of, you know, piggyback on what Sue shared with you, it's almost like a flow chart. It's very -- it's like you answer a series of questions, and then there's a repository of questions specifically designed for who you are. So for instance, if I start answering questions, Jamal Mosley entered in, so are you an employee of the district? You check yes. Are you an administrator? Check yes. And then there's a whole series of questions that are specifically designed for me. If you go through the survey as a community member, there's a whole different set of questions for you as a community member. So there -- it's a very complex survey. One of the things that it does do is it does retain your anonymity so that there's no names or anything being recorded or IPS addresses whatsoever. So one of the feedback we got from the steering committee and from the leadership that we wanted to make sure that individuals completing the survey could do it freely and not have to worry about their identity being tracked back or anything like that. So even, let's say, I'm just kinda making this up, you know, Sue Porter, teacher, she'd go to teacher. And then another question will say, what grade level are you at? It goes to right to elementary, and then it go -- then you're right in that repository of questions for teachers. So there's never an identification of where any of our teachers are completing the survey whatsoever. The other thing that was very difficult with the survey, and it's difficult with any survey, is that we wanted to make sure that the survey was attainable and attractive to the point where people would want to complete it. When we started this, listen, we -- it's fair enough, I'm not being facetious in any way. We probably, when we first started out, about maybe 150 questions for teachers, just to ask. And they were all very good questions, without a doubt. That's 150 questions for parents, teachers, I mean, we could just go down the list. So the hardest part about developing the survey is really pulling out those poignant questions that focus on strengths, priorities, challenges, and opportunities that would capture the priorities of our teachers. And the easy -- some of the easy ways to do that is to kind of rank order questions. So you say, like, what's important to you, you know, teaching, staff, facilities, curriculum, and then some of that would be ranked order. So that took us quite some time. And really customizing our questions according to individuals, according to who you are. So the students' questions had to be tailored and customized so that they would have an accurate reaction in terms of strengths, challenges, priorities, and opportunities. So we focused in about, and again, I say ish, about 18 questions and responses, followed by some open-ended questions, for about four open-ended questions. So approximately, maybe total questions, about maybe 23 to 24. The last question is always, did you ever -- do you have anything else to add or anything you'd like to add to the -- or share with us that we did not ask within the survey? And that kind of, you know, that's how all of the surveys are concluded. The one that we got some feedback on that was -- that we're currently putting the final touches on is the retired teachers, because that one had to be customized in a way where we wanted to make sure that that group of individuals had some opportunities to reflect on, what I say, past and present opportunities in the district. So this survey, you know, when you jump into this stuff, it's like, oh, we're just gonna create a survey. That's right, that's it. But it's not as easy as just creating the survey. The other thing that came up from the folk -- from our focus groups and from meeting with the steering committee and from our meetings we have every week, is we have to launch the survey. We have to make sure that this is a big deal, because I'll jump back to the focus group. Not everyone in the city had an opportunity to go to our focus groups. So we really wanna make sure that this survey is available and accessible to everyone in the city, and I really mean that. So some feedback we got in terms of survey, you know, I'm gonna be reaching out to the community center to make sure that we reserve some time. I'll be down there, and I can guide any individuals or community members that want to or need some support around reacting to the survey. I'll work with Megan Karen, the new director at the community center. I'll reach out to her. We'll also do some reach out to the Boys and Girls Club to see if there's any parents that, once they're picking up their kids or anything like that, that we can hit that. Those groups of individuals, Sue?
The PTOs will --
Yes, the PTOs, we're gonna reach out to.
And the homeschool coordinators, so we can get all the ELL parents.
So in terms of the survey, what we're looking to do is we're putting the final touches on the survey within the next two weeks. And in January is survey month, that we're actually gonna start launching the survey and making it available to the public. So please look out for January for the survey. Kaufman?
Thank you. So you said that there'll be no name checking. It would be an anonymous survey. And you said there would be no checking of IP addresses. So is there any mechanism to prevent people from going in and doing the survey more than once? 'Cause we had issues with a previous survey where we had more people responding than there were in the population to respond. And can anybody -- can somebody come in as a teacher one day and come in as a -- can people come in multiple times in different branches of that survey?
That's a really -- that's a really good question, and that is a possibility, to be honest with you. Only because if you don't -- here's what happens. If you track that IP, if I complete the survey here, what that -- what they do is they connect the survey to the computer, and that's the IP to this computer. So once I complete the survey, this computer can never interact with the survey again, because it's basically saying, you have completed the survey once using this computer. We actually don't want that, because we wanna make the survey available, and I'll use the example at the community center. If there are computers down in the community center, there are, what, eight or 10 of them?
Yes.
And so I want 20 parents to come in and participate in the survey and not be locked out because of the first parents came in and used the -- used those computers, which would make them locked out. The other piece is that, again, this is something we heard back from the faculty and from the steering committee as well, in terms of what to do with this issue. Not many people wanna share their IP addresses with us. That's a breach of confidentiality. If I'm on my iPhone and I decide that, you know, I don't have a very favorable -- I'm gonna just -- I always pick on him, 'cause he's my kid's administrator, so a lot of love to you here, Keith Richards, you're fine. Or nothing, just full disclosure, he does a good job. But, you know, if I'm a parent and I have it out for Keith Richards and I use my phone, your phone IP, what your -- essentially, your ID, we all have IDs to your phone, is now part of the data from UNH. And we don't want that. I don't want that, because I -- and teachers have said to us that they do not want their -- any information being retained or connected in terms of their IP addresses or even their personal computers, because they want the freedom and the ability to respond freely and retain their identity. So that's -- that is a little bit of a drawback, but that did come up during the steering committee, and it also came up with my conversations with teachers as well.
Yeah, I have a quick question about avail -- marketing the link, I guess, to the survey. It's gonna -- I assume it's gonna be on our website, the school district website. How are you gonna -- how are you gonna get people to know about the link? How are you gonna market it?
So that's a -- you know, Ray, it's funny. We were talking about that about maybe two weeks ago. And at first, I just thought, hey, we're just gonna send it out. But we actually have to do a -- as we launch the focus groups, remember, we launched it, we talked it up and stuff, we actually have to do the same thing for the surveys. So I'm just gonna -- I'm doing this at the top of my head. Certainly, if I miss something, please, we're going to obviously send it through, you know, all of our media outlets that we currently have here and available at the school. We're also gonna, you know, make sure it's available and it's being posted in the local newspaper. We're also gonna do the PTO. We're also gonna do local communities, Boys and Girls Club, the community center. There is a municipality publication downtown that will -- that we're gonna utilize, while I can't recall it right now, Stacy knows the name of it. Where this is a big deal, so it is going to be kind of a -- you know, I was thinking that I certainly will do a kind of a public service announcement through our television, just announcing it as we did with the whole strategic plan. So that's why, in my mind, if you look at our -- if you look back at our timeline, we just originally going into this, we just thought, oh, we'll just send our survey link out, and that'll be it. But we certainly have to launch the link. We have to launch this in a way that we really want as many people to participate as much as possible. So it's -- we launched the focus groups, now we have to launch the public -- the availability of the survey. Go ahead, Sue, please. We can say something?
And we've made a point at all of the focus groups to announce that there'll be a survey and to tell people to look for it and to spread the word. So that's been a part of each presentation.
Good. Go ahead, Ms. Oden.
Yes. I know when we were -- we had the opening at South. I had a teacher from South saying I had no idea this was happening, and I guess it was in iNews. Is there any way we can forward this announcement to the principal, and the principal can forward it to all the staff so each staff member personally gets the information to this?
Yes. I have the capacity to send an email out to everyone.
Okay.
I have that. I use -- I don't use that. I used it eight times last year, maybe 10 times the most, and I use it mostly for snow days. So I have the capacity to send an email out to all the staff in the district. So yes.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks, I have two suggestions. One is you may wanna engage the marketing classes here at the high school. You've got signs around promoting the dance or whatever, by-bye birdie, all that stuff. They're used to doing it within the buildings, so they know how to get the word out to at least the high schools internally. And the other thing, I think, probably the best marketer, not to take anything away from our marketing teachers, I don't know who they are, but Amanda Bastoni, I think that's her sweet spot, is marketing. I would engage her and ask her if she has any idea about materials or strategy or whatever, 'cause I think that's her wheelhouse, so.
Thank you. Good, Ray, please.
I think that you're doing a really excellent job reaching, not just with the survey, but well, with the survey, but with the focus groups and survey, reaching different stakeholders. And I think we have to look at -- look at the population, all different areas of the population. I know we get federal dollars, and I believe -- I'm not sure exactly how federal -- I think I know how it works, the federal laws work, that you have to reach what's called environmental justice areas and things like that. I think you're covering those bases, you know? Different socioeconomic groups, people in poverty, and actively. You don't just, you know, advertise something, but you're actively, proactively reaching those groups. So I think you're doing a really good job. I just wanted to make that point.
I would also say that when the makeup of the steering committee was being thought of, we tried to reach all of those different groups in the community. And those -- the part of what the steering committee will do is to spread the survey to their constituents. So I think we're covered that way.
So one of the things that was shared, and again, you make me think of the steering committee and getting the feedback, and I can go on, but you actually, Mr. Kaufman made me think about it, is that Haley, I think it was either Haley or Pat, shared like, we would get a better participation if we coordinated a time during E Block where the principals could just make an announcement and say, okay, at this time, that, you know, I don't know, February 17, where E Block is gonna be devoted to doing this survey. So and they told us that if we're looking for a high return for student participation, that is probably the maximum amount of time or opportunity to do so. There was a Latino parent who was on our steering committee. And part of what I would say that we did do a focus group on with our ELO parents, that was a very -- Bob Chopra facilitated that. We had some high parents, we had some pretty good turnout. But understand that there were probably seven -- seven languages being spoken at one time for this whole thing. So you can only imagine that Bob is giving the instructions, like, okay, everyone's gonna focus on strengths, and listing the strengths. It wasn't like everyone started to go to work. It had to be translated almost five to six times before people, oh, I get it. So it was a very long, and that's okay, long process to -- for that particular group of people. But part of it, and, you know, one of the things that I did share with the steering committee that we need to, Ray, I think where we're going with that, you know, that's one of the things that I think we could get better at, is really reaching those groups of individuals who are not as connected to the schools. And I'm not gonna do it any justice, and it's being recorded, so I'm not gonna intimidate, I'm not going to try to pronounce to our -- she said this Spanish phrase, like, and I don't know how to say it in Spanish, but it basically said something like, when she asked her grandmother about being involved in the schools, she uttered a Spanish phrase, and it really said something to the effect, like, I don't have time for this, or I don't really wanna do that. But in fact, I want these -- we want the surveys to be as easy and interface that we really want to capture and engage that type of, in this case, grandmother. So and thus, that's where the feedback, we gark to do some, what I would call, supports in places like the Boys and Girl Club, like the Arlington Community Center. Like sometimes, we did one, we did a focus group, Sue, in a church, right? Down, was it a Presbyterian church we did it at? So anything that we can do to support and really walk anyone through these surveys and get some feedback, that's what we're gonna do. All right. So I wanna jump back to our focus groups. We've got how many left, Sue? 25 left, 25 sessions left?
I think we're down to three.
All right, we're down to three sessions.
I think.
All right. We're -- I'm coming to the tail end of this.
And we are continually adding, so I mean, that's a fluid number. 'Cause if another group is suggested, we've been adding. Every time we get a suggestion, we do add it.
So we had a suggestion to do a focus group at the Bretwood facilities, and we had a suggestion to do one at Clearway. The last, I would say, the big one happened, was it yesterday? Was it yesterday we did the entire admin?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we did the entire admin yesterday. So as of right now, we have two more focus groups that we're going to reach out and engage. Is that fair?
And the Alderman.
Oh, the Alderman, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay. And when we do, just for the public, for those of you who have not been at one of our focus groups, we really ask our focus groups to react to four, what I call, tenants. And in -- for all of us, it's -- we ask, what are the strengths of the district? What is something that you are particularly proud of and you want to preserve? And the other question is challenges. What are some of the challenges that you see in the district? Opportunities. What would you like us to engage in, in terms of opportunities within the district? And sometimes, when there's teachers, they'll say, oh, we -- can we have opportunities within our schools? And we say, sure, share with us. And finally, what would you like our priorities to be? And I use the word "attainable" because there are priorities that simply are not attainable. The best example that I can share is that not every single student in the Nashville Public Schools is going to get a one-to-one MacBook Pro with, you know, an in-focus. I mean, that's not attainable, because that would be, you know, about $5,000 or $2,000 per student, which would be a significant cost. So what are some attainable initiatives or programs or opportunities you'd like to see in the district? And we ask participants to, you can have one statement, you can have 10 statements, you can have -- there's no right or wrong answers, and my final instruction is that spelling doesn't count. And then what we ask them is some feedback on our mission statement, our value statement, and our vision statement. And underneath them, we have activating questions. And, you know, there's three of them altogether, but I didn't wanna make the slide too long. Certainly, our mission statement needs to be revised or looked at again. It has not been revised since 2009. And so, you know, the activating questions we ask on our mission statement is, why does the Nashville School District exist? How can we get from where we are, from where we -- how can we be, how can, how can we be, how can we get, sorry, from where we are to where we want to be? Sorry, there's a little typo there. What do we value? What does it really, what do we really care about? Is our vision of success? How do we conduct our business? What is our vision of success? And this is kind of an interesting question, and I ask it because I may think the vision of success for the Nashville Public Schools could be every single kid's going to a four-year college. But that might be me. There are others that might say the vision of success for my son or daughter could be that they successfully get into the military, they are global thinkers, they're citizens, they're -- into the military, they are global thinkers, they're citizens, they're, they are responsible and civically engaged. So that's an open-ended question. If I just want to jump up to the mission statement, our mission statement should be no more than, no more than two sentences. If it's anything more than that, then it is not a mission statement, it's a paragraph. And we should be able to kind of digest and be a part of that. The other thing, too, is that we've had a series of NEAS reports that have come about, or in this case, both of our high schools have gone through the NEAS process. And so with that said, it's important that our mission and our vision and our value statement are aligned to the mission and value statements in our high schools. So if I can just now, we talked about surveys earlier, and now if you are looking at that sheet you're following and say the next phase in this, when we go to the winter, we're going to do data analysis. And really, data analysis is really triangulating or triangulate the data. And we are going to be looking for patterns and emerging themes within our qualitative and qualitative data, poignant themes such as we say, like for instance, in terms of reactions from our focus groups. So we've got some reactions around budget. And that budget doesn't necessarily, budget can be extended to building base, it could be for programs, it can be entire district. But really what we're looking for, both in our qualitative and qualitative data, are some salient themes around patterns, I'd say, around emerging topics and initiatives. And then finally, when we are identifying them, and I say draft goals, develop three to five, what I say smart goals that mirror their criteria. And really, these smart goals are, what I would say, are student-centered, practicality in terms of, they have to be practical. I mentioned and gave the example of the laptops, but I'd say they have to be attainability or attainable. And also, you know, you don't want to have goals that are, that are esoteric to the point where they're not connected to anything. So your goals for the district should be somewhere aligned with the mission, the value and the vision statement. So, okay. So I say the end game. The end game, and this is by far something that I'm committed to, and I think that, I believe the steering committee has been very supportive and we really, this is hard in a way that we understand that we're going to get so much data, we already have so much data, that we could probably stop right now and develop a strategic plan that's 200 pages, without a doubt. But part of this is really prioritizing and really saying, I know it's important, but it just might not make the final cut in terms of those three to five goals. And I, we're committed to making sure that, I would say, the strategic plan is digestible and we want to make sure that it's no more than two to 22 pages-ish. And within those two to 22 pages, there are three to five goals, followed by a mission statement, value statement, visionary statement. And I guess, you know, when I look at our, our next phase in this, what is our, there's some research around symbolism, symbolic. I used this example when we were doing our, our presentation with the administrators. All of our schools have kind of like a, either it's a mascot, like for instance, here at the North, it's the Titan. You know, a Titan is like a god figure that's very strong and powerful. The South has the Panther. The Panther is kind of a, you know, a strong figure type thing. My high school, Brockton, we are the Brockton, my old high school, we're the Brockton Boxers. So I guess, you know, as we start to work through this, what is our symbol? What do we represent? Right now, it's the A++ but, you know, now that we're going through this process, I don't have any symbol in terms of the district. I looked at other districts and one district has the, a sage plant just there in terms of knowledge, the picture of a plant. So I don't know. It's just one of those things as we start to work through this process. What is the, what is a symbolism or a, or a kind of a image that defines and represents us? There is, this, on the website, I was just, sometimes I like to just search the web a little bit. There's this picture of a globe and then there's different types of hands touching the globe, which represents diversity, but also symbolizes global awareness. So these are the types of things that, when you start to work through the process, you say, maybe it's time to just think about what, symbolically, who are we? Sue, did I miss anything?
No, that's good. That's good.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. I have a suggestion. As I've said before, I'm a bottom-up kind of person when it comes to doing a process like this. And it's, if it's really going to be kid-centered, the kids should participate more, in my opinion. This notion of some kind of a symbol leads me to believe that, I don't know if you do it as a contest, I don't know if you have it as a survey item, I don't know, but if you can develop, let the kids decide this, then that will create your, help create the buzz you need to promote the survey. And they'll have skin in the game, they'll become more aware of it, and you'll have something tangible that they'll remember that they did this and they'll be a part of it, which quite frankly, right now, I don't see skin in the game on the part of the kids. I mean, you have a few kids that'll come to a meeting, but they don't have skin in the game that I've seen in any of this, where they're, they're engaged in creating what they want their school to be. So this might be an interesting way to get their attention. You could have an art project in the various classes. I don't know, the teachers are creative and they'll figure out ways to do it. But I think it'll help you create the buzz to give you the promotion that you might want to include in the survey. And that could be a triggering event for more participation at every level.
Go ahead, Mr. Greenell.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I see a proactively, I see you proactively seeking stakeholders of all different backgrounds. I think that's great. I see a continuous cooperative, comprehensive planning process. So that is what planning is all about. And as, as Sue said, you know, you had so many focus groups, but you were continually adapting.
Uh huh.
And, and, and looking at what was out there, adopting your process. So I think you're, not only are you on time with your schedule, which is, which is really good, and I think that you're, you're right on, on the target, right on targets with stakeholder targets, and the process is, is a, is a solid planning process.
Thank you. I've had some good help. And she's not here, but I also want to thank Stacy Hines, too. She's been very helpful. There's always, it's, it's easy to do the, it's not never easy, but it's easy to do focus groups when someone is what I call the tactician, who's really making sure that, the hardest part of this is actually planning the focus groups, getting people to get back to you and answer the phone and coordination of schedules. That's hard. So that's, that work was done. In order, if you can just imagine this, to get a focus group planned for November, it's in the district this size, in a city this large, you have to plan this thing in like August, in September. I mean, and that's not because people aren't getting back to you, because there's a lot of things going on in the district that you're up against competition and other things going on that it takes that long. So that's, you know, and Stacy, we started doing this in, you know, in the middle of the heat wave, just to get, just to get a meeting in November with, with individuals and clergy and, you know, our custodians and even within the district, it still takes another month and a half because, because of just our, the size of it and coordinating with faculty meetings and making sure that, you know, oh, we're at the end, so I can say this. Thank goodness there weren't any snow days that factored into this. So thank you for that process and thank you, Stacy. And Sue.
Elizabeth, do you have anything you want to ask or to say?
No, I've been following it quite well and it's been very interesting, the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Oden?
Yeah. I would just like to say, I think you should check with the technology department, maybe Rick Verenkov, to research whether we can get that translation, whether something that would work, that how it brought up. I would think Bob Chopra would probably be using it.
Yeah.
If it was something that we could use, but it's worth checking into. And I would say, I know how important anonymity is. We have had, when I was in the schools, we had several surveys and there were several people who would not take them because they, they would lose their anonymity.
Yeah.
And I think talking about the last survey we did, and there were more people answering it than what you would have expected or what there were in certain groups, it had to do with what the survey was about. It was about snow days and of course, the students wanted to get out early and you can understand why people would take that more than once. They had a strong desire. I don't see this as that type of a survey, that people are going to try to take it multiple times. And if there are a few that do that, I think anonymity is more important.
True.
Than that. So I, I, I think anonymity going that way is the most important for us. Thank you.
So we'll be back. This is just one of several updates we're going to do, so this isn't one and done. We'll certainly have more. By the time we reconvene, it's likely we'll have concluded the data analysis and we'll start to gather the data. So we'll certainly be able to share with you some of the themes and patterns that emerge out of the data analysis. So if there's questions that you think about, that didn't get answered when you're going home, say, oh, I wish I asked that question, there'll be more opportunities to do that. We also have devoted a website that we, oh, I'm sorry. That's so rude of me. Gabby and Tara have been very, very helpful with just recording, posting, documenting all of the reactions that our, our participants have had with our focus groups. And that in itself is a prodigious undertaking because sometimes, and there could be, I'm just making up a number, 25 reactions. And I did one focus group with a group of teachers over at the South and I'm, I'm not, it had to be over 100, Sue, in that, that one session. So it, it all varies and yet we keep, we keep trucking along and, you know how names are just popping up in your head?
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, oh, once that happens, then what happens? And then I forgot about Dawn Miller, you know?
And I was going to bring her up.
So it's just like, kind of like, you forget about how this machine and/or train is being directed. And it's easy to say, when you're at the controllers and you're just easily pushing a button saying left and right, but there's so many people involved in this. And Dawn Miller is our data analysis and she has been taking all that raw data and really synthesizing it and making it make sense. The other piece that she's been doing, which is amazing, and I am not going to do any justice to the survey development that she has done, but that in itself has taken really someone who is extremely skilled and can get in the weeds to make sure that, if you really think about it, there's a repository for parents, teachers, administrators, retired teachers, community members, all trying to capture strengths and weaknesses and challenges and priorities, also trying to get feedback on the mission and, and vision and value, all while trying to get open-ended responses. And by the way, 23 questions. So that in itself has been, you know, many thanks to her. So we'll get back to you. It's likely that if there's conversation around data and conversation around how the data is collected, analyzed and stuff, it's best to actually talk to the, I'm, I'm good at it, but Dawn's better at it. I'd say the expert at doing this. And so I'll have her come and be available for questioning and comments and, and feedback and commentary.
And she's been working in close association with UNH.
Yes, she has.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So I'm just curious, I think it's a great idea to have, you know, a webpage dedicated to this. Will there be a feedback mechanism on that page so somebody from the public would be able to send in, maybe they can't get to a focus group, but they have something they want to share with the committee. Is there, will there be a mechanism on the webpage to do that?
That's the purpose of the survey. The survey will have that for people to give us feedback. So the, one of the things I said at the beginning of, when we talked about the survey, is that the last question will be something to the effect, is this something that you'd like to share that you haven't been able to share or that wasn't captured in the survey or, you know, during this process? And then that's an opportunity for people to do so. I think what the, we talked about that, to be very honest with you, and the district did have something like that available, but what ended up happening is that you need someone to man that because now that becomes a feedback for a variety of things. And we don't have that capacity to do so. And really, that's not the, to get that, the feedback we're looking for can be captured through the survey. That, that's what, we got some feedback from the steering committee and from our leadership group. So that's kind of the thought process behind that.
Do you have any idea how long it will take to complete the survey?
So the answer to-
It's 22 questions, right?
So here's what I did. So I did it and for me, I did it on two, when I say we ran a beta version, we ran a beta version. That means we, it's not available to the public. So I did it on my phone and I'm not a very good texter on my phone. So it took me, just the open-ended questions, about 15 minutes, and then there were four to five-ish, please, ish, open-ended questions we're still working through. So it probably took me about 20 minutes or maybe 21 minutes. If I can, I know she's not here, but I know Heather is very adept at her phone and she said that she can actually, she responds to her emails on phone. So for me, it took me about 21, 22 minutes. Then I did it on my computer where I'm much more comfortable. So it took me about 15 minutes to do it on my computer. So it all depends if you're a very good texter and you use your phone as much as, you know, our kids do, it's pretty easy. The other thing that I did on my phone is that, it's not about so much the completion, but it's more along about the interface and whether you can read it, whether it flows nicely, whether when, I'm not making any sense by doing this, but like, as you start to work through the rank order, it's, it's an arrow pointing. So I'm looking at it like, is it easy for me to navigate this with just my thumb? And there is a sense of ease to do so. We did get some feedback from some teachers that perhaps it was a little long, but we certainly took that feedback from the steering committee and tried to make it as seamless, but very attractive interface so that people would be able to complete it in a timely manner. Here's what I'm thinking, thinking out loud for a second. We do not want people spending no more than 20 minutes, 20, 25 minutes on this survey. If it's any longer than that, they're not going to complete it.
That's true.
Yes, Ms. Oden?
I just want to thank you and Ms. Porter. I know I walked out of a lot of meetings with Ms. Porter and she'd say, oh, I have to be at someplace in the morning and then someplace the next day. It, it has been very time-consuming. You've been dedicated to it and I appreciate that. And I hope the community appreciates that.
They really like the FaceTime. All of the groups we've gone to have been very open to this and they are very happy to have administration and a school board member going and asking them and being active listeners. So I think it's been extremely positive. And it's, it's, it's good to be out and about. Yeah. And then talking to people on the front line, it's good.
I would say probably 98% of our meetings, like, we're done with the activity. And then, when we first started, we were like, oh, we're done with the activity. Well, we're, we're, well, it's time to go. Well, no. They actually want, people would stay sometimes an extra, we have kids here, actually. They stayed an extra hour and a half, like asking questions and, and talking and every, I would say, the majority, 98% of our meetings, we finish the activity and people want to stay and have another 35 to 45 minutes just talking with us. They want our attention.
Yeah.
They want to have intimate conversations with me, with board members. I mean, it's amazing. I mean, every, if we, when we end at seven, we don't leave until eight. That, that's, I'm being generous with that, with that time. It's usually an hour after. It's usually an hour after the activity is over.
Yeah, it's been great, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Kaufman?
Thanks. I'm curious about participation. Do you have any idea how many people have participated so far?
I can tell you how it feels. It feels like 80,000 people have participated, right, Sue?
We haven't added it up yet.
Yeah.
I think that's on the to-do list, is to add everything up. But I will say that at the last Steering Committee meeting, I asked the mayor, I said, you know, when you have a, what do they call it, an open forum, or a public hearing, or whatever you call it, you know, it would be like, for a certain topic, it would be one or two nights, and, you know, possibly at City Hall, say. And I said, if you, over that period, if you got 100 people, what would that be like? He said, that would be really good, to get 100 people. Well, I can say, you know, we haven't narrowed it to just one or two evenings. This has been going on since September, several a week since September. So I think that, you know, it doesn't look like as much, because there's so many groups, and some of the groups have a lot of people, and some of them have a few, and that's okay. But if you take it in total, it's a lot of people. I think in a, in a, in a good cross-section of people. So the, the mayor was actually impressed with that, so I took that as a good thing.
So I don't know what I'm going to do, Sue, we don't see each other, like-
I know.
So it's going to be limited to, I think we-
You, and I've spent a lot of time with Garth also.
So I don't know what I'm going to do with myself now, like, instead of seeing you, like, I think literally, at some point, we probably saw each other every day.
Yes.
Except maybe Friday, like, four out of the five days that we would see each other, and one day, we probably, it was maybe, it was on a Saturday.
Yes. Yesterday, I saw you two times.
Right.
Three times, I think, actually.
So I guess our, what's, I want to say, Asford and Simpson, Sonny, what's it, I want to say, Cher, Sonny and Bono, I'm trying to think of, you know, some duets here, we're going to, we're going to break up this band. So it's been great, and thank you.
Thank you. No, it's been fun.
And thank you to the people at Central Office. I know I walked in, and Tara and Gabby were doing the thing-
Yes.
They had Post-it notes about, about three inches thick, that they were typing up, so that we would have a copy of them. It's a lot of work on them, too.
And that feeds right into what Dawn is doing, so she's taking all that raw data and then organizing it and analyzing it, so like, they're the first critical piece in it, you know, writing down everything from all those Post-its.
All right.
To everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Looking for motion to adjourn.
Motion. Oh, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn, Mrs. Olden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yeah.
Ms. Greenow votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yeah, yes.
We are adjourned at-
7:33.
7:33 PM.